I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, excuse me, Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Mike McDermott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk Roltke.
Councilman Godbaugh.
Present.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Radkowski.
Here.
President Hart.
Here.
Accorum is present.
Okay, special presentations and announcements, I will turn it over to the mayor.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, thank you for being here tonight. So tonight, we're gonna take a few minutes before tonight's council meeting to bring up Gretchen from the Westland Chamber and Devin Adams from the City of Westland. And we're going to, tonight, we're gonna distribute some money back to the local organizations that helped volunteer to make this year's Blues Brews and Barbecue another successful event. So maybe as they're working their way to the microphone, I can say, well, first of all, Devin's, since we've all seen you last, is a new father, so we have to, so we'll have to give him a little break if he looks like he hasn't been getting enough sleep lately. So we've all been there, so, but this was our 10th annual Blues Brews and Barbecue, and I think, all said and done, it was a very successful event, and, you know, we had to make a decision early on if we were going to try to do this, this big event with, with all that was going on with the pandemic, but at the end of the day, I think we made the right decision to move forward with it. And both Gretchen and Devin did an incredible job, I thought it was very well organized, I think everybody came and had a good time. As we distribute the, the funds tonight, there, there, there may be not be as much as we've distributed in the past, we had a great turnout, but one of the things that, that hurt us a little bit from the pandemic was we lost a couple of our vendors, so, the vendors that were there were very glad because they sold out their barbecue in a record amount of time, but with the supply chain problems with food and, and with help, we had a couple last minute folks dropped out, including famous Dave's who hasn't missed a single Blues Brews and Barbecue yet. But with that said and done, I think it was a great two-day event, the fireworks, I think, were one of our best fireworks that we've had in Westland yet. The drone show, I think, kinda stole the show, so a lot of people really enjoyed the drone show, and a lot of people said, "You should have had music with the drone show," but for those of you that were there, you know that we did have music, and we had a lot of other cities ask us if we could connect them with the drone folks, so of course, we did not give them their number. But with that said also, Thornetta Davis was a great draw, she had a great time, and she loves coming to Westland, and if you get a chance, you gotta follow her because she is the queen of blues in the city of Detroit, and she's really growing in popularity, and we've been fortunate enough to have her for several events, and these are free events, and it's hard to get Thornetta Davis for a, for a free event, she's really grown fast, so it was great to have her, and with that, we'll pass it over to Gretchen and Devin.
Thank you, Council President Hart, Mayor Wild, and Devin. After not having our 2020 Blues Brews and Barbecues, we were excited to bring back this favorite community event to Westland. Event planning and preparation started this past January, and we were enthusiastic that we had the community support for this event. On behalf of the Westland Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank all of our 2021 Blues Brews and Barbecue sponsors, food vendors, entertainers, the Westland Police, Westland Fire Department, those that participated in our first family fun time, the hard-working Westland DPS crew, and everyone else who had a hand in making this event possible. Thank you to Mayor Wild and the Westland City Administration for all of your assistance during this event, and a huge thank you to the Westland community and visitors to Westland for coming out and supporting this event. As a lifelong Westland resident, it is great to see the community come together for such a fun event. As the mayor said, we were wowed by the fireworks and our new drone show, guess we have to do that again, Devin.
Absolutely.
All right, Gretchen, thank you, and thank you, everybody. Before I begin with the plaque presentations, I also wanted to extend a thank you to the mayor, all of council, especially Councilman Jim Godbaugh, who assisted in securing volunteers who were paying out tonight, our police and fire and public service departments, all civic groups, and of course, our sponsors, because without them, this event would not be possible. As soon to be demonstrated tonight, upon a successful event, monies that are raised are indeed put back into the community. As the mayor alluded to, we'll be distributing close to $11,000 tonight, all of which will positively serve 16 different civic organizations. As we all know, every one of the civic groups represented tonight do great things for our community, and as an administration, we are happy that we can help fund their various initiatives. With this being our 10th annual event, to date, over $150,000 has been put back into the community, so again, all this is possible because of our sponsors. So tonight, we'll begin presentations by recognizing three high-level sponsors that were a crucial part of the success of our 2021 Blues Brews and Barbecue event. When I call each of you up, Gretchen will present you with your plaque, we will stop for a quick photo op, and then the mic is yours in case you would like to say anything on behalf of the organization, but you're definitely not required to. So we will begin with, so first, I'd like to call up representatives of the Wayne County Community College District, who has been a reoccurring $5,000 Eric Clapton sponsor for as long as I can remember, so I believe Sharon and Tony are here on behalf of the school. So again, to the school, we can't thank you enough for your continued support.
Thank you.
Tony?
Did you like to report?
Oh.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything?
Tony, say something.
Delegation does it well. I just, I wanna thank everybody at the Westland City for that Blues, Blues and Barbecue. I've come the last few years, except for last year, it's a great event, we're glad to be a sponsorship for it, it's good to see that, it brings out families to this event, and I think that's exactly what the city was trying to do, and we enjoyed it, and thank you again for having us there.
And so next, we have Dan Vannett, Director of Municipal Relations for Priority Waste. As we all know, Priority Waste is our new trash hauler, who began working with the city in November of last year, so Dan, thank you for you and your team for also becoming an Eric Clapton sponsor, your partnership has helped out our event tremendously, and we are happy to recognize you tonight. Dan?
Good evening, everybody, and as the representative from Priority Waste, we just want to thank you all and everybody in the city of Westland for welcoming us over the last 10 months, with the transition to our service and everything, all we aim for is to be there for the community, be trustworthy in the service, and be active in the community, so thank you for allowing us to be a part of the sponsorship, thank you.
And then last, but certainly not least, we have Eric Radkowski, accepting the plaque on behalf of Vic Barra in the Wayne Ford Civic League.
That was awesome, though.
I'm sorry, my bad.
Close enough.
The Wayne Ford Civic League was our fireworks drone show sponsor, so thanks to them, we were able to put together our best show to date. Eric?
Eric.
I apologize, Eric.
I just assumed.
Eric?
No, I got nothing.
All right, so guys, if we could, let's give them all just one big round of applause. And so, one last time, we can't thank you guys enough for your continued support, and we hope that we continue to partnership for years to come. And I'll pass it back over to Gretchen, so we can begin the civic check presentations.
I get the fun parts. So we couldn't put on this event without the support of our 16 volunteer organizations, who came out to welcome guests, pick up trash, help with parking, answer guest questions, and assist where needed. So when your organization's name is called, we ask that one person, just one, comes up to accept the check. After everyone receives their check, you'll please follow us into the ballroom, and we will take large group photos. All right, let's see if I got this correct, so the first one is going to be the Westland Jaycees.
Do you want them all to stand up here?
All right, the next one, Westland Civitan Club. No lottery ticket numbers today, Mr. Quinn. Weren't we all? The next one, the Westland Lions Club. St. John's Episcopal Church. The Westland Democratic Club. The Westland Democratic Club. The Westland Rotary Club. The Westland Rotary Club. The Westland Rotary Club. Friends at the Library. Knights of Columbus, number 15204 out of Westland. We have Westland Youth Assistance. Is there a representative from Plymouth Westland Grange here? Okay, and then we also had the Westland Youth Athletic Association, they cannot be here, as they have a meeting tonight, and then United Community International. Well, that's, we want to thank everybody for all of your support this upcoming year, and this past year with Blues Brews and Barbecues. Again, thank you to the volunteer organizations, Mayor Wild, the Westland City Council, and I also want to thank the Westland Administration and all the Westland community for coming out supporting this event, and we will see you next year in 2022, thank you very much.
Pull the slept and clear out of the room real quick.
All right, Kevin, you have no audience now. You sure don't want to wait till next meeting?
Yeah, you guys.
All right, so next, we have a legislative update from a man who knows how to clear a room, State Representative Kevin Coleman.
Hi, everybody, thank you, City Council, I appreciate you giving me the time to address you very briefly tonight. The main reason I came is I wanted to let you know, you know, we've been working hard on your behalf in Lansing, always honored to represent you as your state representative. Commissioner Anderson and I, we're gonna be doing a coffee hour one week from today, it's gonna be at the Westland Library, so that's Monday, October 11th, 9:00 a.m. at the Westland Public Library, so we're very excited to get our coffee hours going, and this is the second Monday of every month going forward at 9:00 a.m. at the Westland Library. Also, Senator Dana Polhankey and I, we're gonna be doing a coffee hour in Wayne, so if you miss the Westland Coffee Hour, I do invite anybody in Westland to come on down to Wayne, so we'll be at the Public Library in Wayne, Thursday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. So that's Thursday, October 28th, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Wayne Library in downtown Wayne, and that's with Senator Polhankey. A couple of things that we'll be discussing at our coffee hours, one, the big one is Governor Gretchen Whitmer, last week, signed the State of Michigan budget. It's a nearly $70 billion budget that includes a lot more funding for things like schools, roads, bridges, infrastructure all throughout our state. It includes new investments in healthcare services, including covering the cost of treating certain diseases like sickle cell anemia. It's the largest one-time deposit ever into our rainy day fund to protect future, the future financial state of our, of our state of Michigan. Also, there's funding for job training programs to help workers increase their skills and learn new trades at no cost, so this is workforce training, which is important in our ever-changing economy. I would say a couple things that are more pertinent to the city of Westland is a 2% bump in statutory revenue sharing going to all the cities in the state, so that'll apply to our city as well, and then also, I was very, very pleased to help secure $2 million in appropriations for our district, which is Wayne and Westland, and that was working with our state senators, Polhankey and Geis. Half a million of that will be going to the Marshall Community Center project here in the city of Westland, so I'm really pleased about that. And then a million dollars is going to the Village of Westland Senior Living, it's a publicly funded senior living center on Cherry Hill, and then another half a million's gonna be going to the Gaudi Amphitheater in Wayne, which is in bad need of some repairs. But I spoke with the mayor last week and informed him of the, the money that'd be coming to the city, and sharing the good news, but I wanted to come tonight and share that with you as well. We do have some more ARP, American Rescue Plan money, that's federal money that's being passed through the state, and hopefully, some of that makes it back down to our cities, so I spoke with Senator Geis earlier, and we are gonna be advocating for more money to be coming to the city, and fighting for that in Lansing on your behalf, so that's a couple of things that we'll be talking about at our coffee hour, and then one last thing I wanted to mention was redistricting, so the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Committee, they are working day by day for the next few months to finalize our legislative maps, so it's, it's likely that our legislative districts will look different, right now, we're in District 16 in the Michigan State House, which, which I cover, but that could change, and some of the lines around here could change, and that applies to the State Senate and U.S. Congress as well, but what I wanted to share tonight was a website, which people can go on there and see the draft maps, and then even make public comment, and talk to the commission, and leave some feedback, because some, some communities feel like maybe the new lines aren't representing, are disenfranchising their communities, and maybe they won't get the same amount of representation that they would get in the new districts as they have now, so it's important for, for local officials and, and voters, and I would say, say anybody, any people in general to get on there, take a look, and share some feedback, so that website is Michigan.mydistricting.com. That's all I have for you, for you tonight, and then lastly, I'm just gonna leave you with my contact information, we're always happy to help constituents with any state-related issues that they may have, we get a lot of local issues in our office too, and I always try to pass those along to the administration. So our phone number is 517-373-2576, 517-373-2576, and our email is kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. Thank you, have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, Mr. Rep. Next, we move into questions or input on the agenda. Section allow a person to be recognized only beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Are there any questions on the agenda? On the agenda? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yep. Of course. Richard Graham from Westland, and also with Move West and Fort. Good evening, council, was gonna say Mayor Wild, but I guess he already left, and thank him for being here since he missed the, the month of September, hadn't seen him in council chamber since August, but I guess my question on the agenda is, why is there nothing on new business? I mean, why there's nothing here for consent calendar, couple items, and nothing new business, so that's really my question is, did you go back to the administration and ask them to get something going here, some new business, some activity?
There's no agenda item that says there's no agenda item, so, you know.
Okay, so there's nothing here. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or input on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar, is there any changes to the consent calendar? Excuse me, back that up, is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Godbaugh, are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held September 20, 2021. Approval of annual city works licensing subscription related to workflow management applications for various city departments. This is effective November 15, 2021, through November 14, 2022, in the amount of $76,500. Moving to new business, item one, approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Radkowski, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner, speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first word of the speaker, it will not stop while the speaker is recognized on the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time, however, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Are there any input? Sir?
Ladies and gentlemen, today is October 4th, 2021. The Westland Committee Against Corruption asked me to speak on their behalf. One of the things they want to know, maybe it has been done, we're not sure, they want to know if the mayor and Tasha are going to have a debate in whether or not they're going to have it on our WLDN, so the citizens can get a better input before the election. I haven't heard a thing, and I think it'd be very fair for the citizens to hear them both out. The mayor embezzled police and fire generic money and siphoned it into the general fund, and it's on paper by Mark Byas.
That's a personal attack.
Byas money by law is supposed to go directly into the Westland Police and Fire Pension Plan. The mayor embezzled $500,000 in the past from the library without taking the advice of our $850,000 city attorney, who would have stood only with the consent of the library board, which he later did after the fact. Wild only has a high school degree, we call it the arrogance of power, that's why we spend millions of dollars for our directors and OHM Engineering Department, actuary experts, plant Moran, and he seems to fly in the air of, he goes against everyone that has advice for him, he goes in the opposite direction, he reminds me when I was in high school, that Walter Mitty story, the young guy who thought he was a pilot, a doctor, and he got away with it. Wild told the library board he changed his mind and wasn't gonna take that money out, and then he, he reversed, and right before, in June, just before the end of the fiscal year, he had the board vote and take it out, and the library... a motion and support from the council. Are there any questions on the agenda? On the agenda? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
Yep.
Of course.
Richard Graham from Westland and also with Move Westland Forward. Good evening, council. Was going to say Mayor Wild, but I guess he already left. And thank him for being here since he missed the, the month of September and hadn't seen him in council chambers since August. But I guess my question on the agenda is, why is there nothing on new business? I mean, why there's nothing here for consent calendar, a couple items, and nothing new business? So that's really my question is, did you go back to the administration and ask them to get something going here, some new business, some activity?
There's no agenda item that says there's no agenda item. So, you know.
Okay, so there's nothing here. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, are there any other questions or input on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Is there any changes to the consent count? Excuse me, back that up. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hursberg, supported by Councilman Godbout. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held September 20, 2021. Approval of annual City Works licensing subscription related to workflow management applications for various city departments. This is effective November 15, 2021, through November 14, 2022, in the amount of $76,500. Moving to new business. Item one, approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Hursberg, supported by Councilwoman Radkowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first word of the speaker. It will not stop while the speaker is recognized on the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Are there any input? Sir?
Ladies and gentlemen, today is October 4th, 2021. The Westland Committee Against Corruption asked me to speak on their behalf. One of the things they want to know, maybe it has been done, we're not sure, they want to know if the mayor and Tasha are going to have a debate in whether or not they're going to have it on our WLDN, so the citizens can get a better input before the election. I haven't heard a thing, and I think it'd be very fair for the citizens to hear them both out. The mayor embezzled police and fire generic money and siphoned it into the general fund, and it's on paper by Mark Byas.
That's a personal attack.
Byas money by law is supposed to go directly into the Westland Police and Fire Pension Plan. The mayor embezzled $500,000 in the past from the library without taking the advice of our $850,000 city attorney, who would have said only with the consent of the library board, which he later did after the fact. Wild only has a high school degree. We call it the arrogance of power. That's why we spend millions of dollars for our directors and OHM Engineering Department, actuary experts, plant Moran, and he seems to fly in the era of, he goes against everyone that has advice for him. He goes in the opposite direction. He reminds me when I was in high school of Walter Mitty's story, the young guy who thought he was a pilot, a doctor, and he got away with it. Wild told the library board he changed his mind and wasn't going to take that money out. And then he, he reversed, and right before, in June, just before the end of the fiscal year, he had the board vote and take it out. And the library came, and they were incensed. They said, you just disarmed us because you knew we'd hire an attorney. And he did. He kept that $500,000 from the library, put it in the general fund from June to September. The mayor also embezzled money from the Water and Sewer Department to the tune of over $200,000 and used it for his Blues events. Citizens and businesses are being priced out of the city, and everywhere you go in the city, you see empty buildings everywhere, just about everywhere. We're losing more than we're gaining. The mayor's own contract is illegal. The multiplier is 2.8% and cannot be over 2.5% by law. He's got it inflated so he can get more for his pension. That inflates his pension. The mayor is now taking, believe it or not, $340,000 a year from our precious library because of his reckless spending and putting it into the general fund every three years. That's a million dollars.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you. Is there any other comment? Yes.
Richard Graham again with Move Westland Forward. First, want to thank State Representative Coleman. I didn't know Marshall Middle School was moving forward. I think you said a half a million dollars. I didn't see anything in the papers. So when's it going to open? What's the plans, since there's funding already? So thank you for funding. Look forward to hearing about how it's going to open and, and all the great plans for it. I would like to take a few moments to comment on the upcoming council race, and specifically Deborah Foltz, who is running for council, is on a Wild-appointed planning commission. She is no question part of Team Wild. What is disturbing to many residents is how she admitted to falsifying her affidavit at City Hall to run. What is equally disturbing is how Team Wild, specifically Mayor Wild, with select others are doubling down to get her elected. Mayor Wild is financially contributing to her campaign, more on that later, along with his endorsement. When will she be brought up on charges? If elected, there could be grounds to launch a recall campaign of Deborah Foltz, along with possible legal action. This may also involve the Ethics Board, which is interesting because Lori Wilson, who is stated on the official county paperwork to be her treasurer while she is on the Ethics Board. This could be the gift that keeps on giving at every council meeting if she is elected and could drag on for at least two years. Hopefully, Team Wild is ready for what might happen if elected. What is also disappointing to many taxpayers was City Clerk LeBlanc's actions. I do not mean what he believes he could or could not do as city clerk, but as a resident and taxpayer in Westland. I assume he's free to speak and can if he chooses to. His silence is unfortunately expected from the long-term, from a long-term politician who'd rather get along with Team Wild than stand up for the residents. There was a recent court case, and a judge seemed skeptical of what occurred from what the city could have done. Again, the citizens' majority lose, while the select few continue to take, and then take some more. November and December could be extra special this year. A recall campaign, hopefully Ms. Foltz, is ready for a long-drawn-out public display if, if elected. Citizens, if you voted already absentee in the general election, you can go and spoil your ballot and ask for a new ballot. Going back to the, the campaign contribution, but again, Mayor Wild left already. Wayne County and Deborah Foltz's filing, official filing lists his address for the $200 contribution on Opal Drive. However, the address does not come up on tax records. Mayor Wild was going to ask him, but he left. Is this, is this a possible falsification of campaign finance documents by Mayor Wild or Ms. Foltz? Take care and good night.
Is there any other public comment? Yes.
I just, my name's Sarah Austin. I'm a Westland resident. I just want to thank the city and the Parks and Rec Department for all of the things that are being brought up in our community. As we just saw, 16 organizations being recognized for the Blues, Brews, and Barbecue event volunteering. Not only does that mean that we had 16 organizations participating in our city, it means we have 16 organizations that are then going to be using those funds, giving back to building our city and making our community strong. But also, the trunk-or-treat event that's going to be happening later this month, and it really goes to show how, even though we've gone through 18, 19, 20 months of not being able to do things, the city is doing everything they can to keep people involved and to get engaged with our community. So I just want to thank all of you and the Parks and Rec Department and Mayor Wild and everybody for kind of focusing on what can we do to keep engaging people. Thank you.
Thank you. So any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I will move to comments from the administration. But I see there's no administration. We'll move into a comment from the city attorney. Is there any comment from the attorney today?
From the city attorney's office.
Thank you. Okay, I will now allow the clerk to respond.
I'll be very brief. I'd like to let Mr. Graham and anybody else out there know that in response to questions regarding what has happened regarding candidacies for the 2021 election, I've been very forthright in person. What I have not been is advertising my personal opinion as an individual, as a taxpayer. And to the extent that I've commented regarding my position as clerk, I think that that has been shared within the media. But at no point would I ever like to rent a billboard, for example, to speak specifically about one candidate who did indeed falsify their document. I guess in conclusion, the one takeaway that, that I have regarding the hearing that was held in Third Circuit Court regarding that matter, the hearing, by the way, which was never noticed officially to my office, was never noticed officially to the city of Westland, and the city attorney's office is well aware of that as well. In fact, the issue of there being a hearing at all in front of Judge Kenny was discovered by accident. The city never became notified because the claim, the document that was presented as a complaint to the court was improperly filed, and that is a fact. But nonetheless, his findings at the end of it were that indeed, the timeliness of the issue would not allow for any entity to take action at the point that a complaint was made. It's called latches. That is part of the official ruling. And, you know, my response to that, of course, was not solicited by any individual person. Not a single person has asked me directly what I thought about that. But I'll share today that I have had a conversation with another member of the media who plans to place items in print soon, and that is that if this issue had been brought up before ballots had been printed for the primary election, the city clerk would have conducted an investigation. The findings would have been similar to that of another candidate who was disqualified from the ballot. The candidate, quite simply, would not have been on the ballot. But the fact that it was complained three days before an election and at a time when even the court confirmed it was too late to do anything about it, it is what it is. My hope is that members of the state legislature will listen to clerks like me who have experienced similar things over the past couple of years and take to heart consideration of some meaningful change to codify issues that are not addressed within Michigan compiled laws, as opposed to some of the other unnecessary items that are being considered today. And again, if anybody wants to talk about it privately, I'd certainly be willing to talk. Thank you for allowing me to respond.
Yes, Mr. Clerk. I'm also going to make special consideration. I know there was residents that were in this room that did want to speak, but they left for the, excuse me, for the award, excuse me, the photos for the checks that were given out. I'm going to reopen citizen comment for anybody who hasn't spoken yet. So, yes.
Well, the chief's not here, but thank him for the police patrols down on the south end. And please, continue it and build it back up. Put the radar signage back out there because on the weekends, it's a free-for-all. Number two, I don't normally talk about things that are said on social media because I'm not a social media person, but something was sent to me in reference to me being somebody's treasurer. Well, we know that was a lie. We also know that the person who wrote this on social media knew it was not the truth and that that paperwork had been amended. But that was not said in there. It was just disparaging to me, and I don't like it. I don't care for it, and it's really got me angry. And instead of going after somebody who has nothing to do with this election except for being a precinct delegate, I would suggest that that person investigate the person that they have endorsed, not only verbally written, but monetarily. Thank you.
For those that went to the check photos, is there anybody else who had comment?
Oh, yeah. Take a picture of me.
All right. Hey, hey, order, order in the, order in the chamber. Well, okay, now you're talking over me, though. Now you're talking over me. And? Order, and order, please.
Evening, everyone. Thank you. Ruby Richards, Westland resident, coming to you today as the Western Wayne County NAACP Assistant Secretary. Western Wayne County NAACP is presenting its 24th Annual Freedom Fundraiser Event Dinner. The theme is "On the Road to Recovery: Let the Healing Begin" on Sunday, October 17, 2021, from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. via Zoom. For information about the event and on purchasing tickets, sponsorships, and advertising packages, go to www.westernwayncountyNAACP.com. Thank you.
Sir? Yes.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for giving us this consideration. Okay, well, I'm representing of the Norwayne Community Council, and we're celebrating our 79th year of the Norwayne Community. So the Harvest Fest is what I'm here to talk about, and that's going to be October 16, and it's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, and that's 32150 Dorsey Street. And of course, that's Westland. And at the Harvest Fest, we're going to have a pumpkin painting, and of course, we'll be handing out the pumpkins as well, and pony brides, and a kind of a petting area, live music, trick-or-treat for the kids. And we are taking in consideration the social distancing. So we've, we're going to be spacing out the tables and limiting them so that the children will have more room and will be able to monitor the people as they come in. And then also, the cider and donuts, and crafts in the gym for the kids, and I think it's going to be an outstanding event this year, and look forward to, to you joining us. Once again, that's at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center at 32150 Dorsey from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there any other comment from those who left? All right, seeing none, I'll close citizens' comment again. I will move to council comments, beginning with Councilman Hursberg. Let me, give me one second. There you are, council.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief tonight. There was one question during citizens' comments about a debate or candidates forum. I don't believe there's going to be any further debates for the mayoral candidates, and there's no more candidate forums for the council candidates. So the election's a month away. Just wanted to state that since it was asked. I also want to thank all the volunteers who helped out at Blues, Brews, and Barbecue this year. If anybody drove by the event grounds the day after, you wouldn't have even known that the event took place. And as you could see tonight with the 16 groups who volunteered, volunteerism is very strong in Westland, and it seems to be getting stronger. I think that's more groups than we had last time. Lastly, I'll just congratulate Rich Krumert on his promotion to deputy police chief, and congratulate Reed Zalinski as a new hire. He's a graduate of John Glenn and served as a police officer in Detroit for a couple of years before coming back to Westland. And I'll also congratulate all the other promotions and new hires. And also congratulate Deputy Chief Miller on his retirement, and thanks for your service. Thank you.
Next is Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I'd like to start by reminding everyone that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, as well as many other important topics, but that is one of them. Many of us know people who are affected by breast cancer. If you are blessed to not be one of them directly, there are several ways that you can show awareness or support for those who have been impacted by breast cancer. One of those ways is to share, excuse me, spread the word on social media. You can also share stories of friends and/or family that have been impacted by breast cancer, and also proudly wear a pink ribbon, which is the breast cancer famous symbol. Thank you. Secondly, I'd like to address Mr. Rock's question, since it was directed specifically to me in terms of a debate. I definitely, as a mayoral candidate, would be open to debating. I do not believe that that is something that the mayor desires. So it is based on the preference of the candidate. This preference, if you, if you're monitoring the news, there are other mayoral candidates in other cities who have opted not to do debates. So it is something that people can elect to do or not. But if that is something that the mayor would have been open to as a mayoral candidate, I definitely would have liked to have done that. So thank you for asking. I wanted to speak specifically to the matter that was mentioned by Westland resident Richard Graham regarding Deborah Foltz, since this is a public topic, and I am a taxpaying citizen who is equally as concerned about what happened. I wanted to add some clarity in terms of what the judge actually said at the, at the hearing, because I was present for that case. And basically, the judge did not require, the reason why her name, Deborah Foltz's name was not removed from the ballot is because the judge felt that the timeliness of the complaint, or not, excuse me, the lawsuit that Candy Halton filed against Deborah Foltz did not happen soon enough. It was implied by the judge that had she filed that lawsuit sooner, he, it, it, it may have been a different outcome. The issue specific to Deborah Foltz's case, who was, like you said, she's running for city council, what was clear and actually proven during the court hearing, and also the, the facts were given to the clerk's office, was that Deborah Foltz committed perjury, which is a felony in the state of Michigan. She committed perjury when she signed that affidavit of identity stating that she did not owe any fines, any out, any reports, all of her reports were up to date, and she did not owe any unpaid campaign fees. It is a felony to falsify that affidavit, which she did. Not only did she falsify that affidavit, she gave an interview to the Westland Observer, I want to say a month ago roughly, and she admitted to having committed perjury, and almost boasted about the fact that she's moving forward anyway. There were 13 candidates who ran for city council. Five of those candidates were removed from the ballot after the primary. Each one of those candidates, with the exception of Deborah Foltz, followed the law. It was completely unfair. Not only did she commit perjury with that affidavit, she owed $5,000 in unpaid campaign fees dating all the way back to 2017, and she had unpaid filed, or excuse me, unfilled campaign reports dating all the way back to 2017. She did not attempt to pay those fees until after, in full, until after the primary election, once she, I assume, was sure that she made it through. What was very alarming and very disappointing is that Westland has a three-person election commission in our city. The election commission is made up of Clerk Richard LeBlanc, Mayor Bill Wild, and Council President Jim Hart. This election commission decides whose names goes on the ballots. They certify who's filed and who will be on the ballot. Two of the three members donated funds to Deborah Foltz's campaign. So Mayor Bill Wild has financed her, and Council President Jim and Council President Jim Hart has donated funding to Deborah Fox to try and help her get elected. The body that was supposed to step in and do something when the complaint came into the city of Westland was the election commission. But you can see why many people believe that their actions were biased because they have, they, they have a vested interest in helping her get elected. Not only that, there was a previous candidate who was running for mayor, essentially a challenge to Bill Wild that the election commission got together, and they removed him from the ballot. They failed to remove Deborah Fox. And what the judge did say in terms of Clerk Rich, Richard LeBlanc saying that there was nothing he can do once he found out that he encouraged someone to file a case in the court, file with the court. The judge stated on the record that he disagreed that in terms of the general election, he disagreed that the clerk's office could not have removed her name from the ballot because the, the complaint that came into the city of Westland, the, the city of Westland received the first written complaint on July 29th against Deborah Fox for the topic, the items that I already received. It came in on July 29th. The second complaint that went, written complaint that went to the clerk's office was received on August the 4th. That was the day after the August 3rd election. And the judge even stated, why was there no action taken for the general election ballot? Once the city was clear that the, the perjury occurred, why didn't the city do something about the general election ballot? And while he said that Richard LeBlanc, because the law is so, it's not documented to say that he had to do it. What the charter says is that the clerk is supposed to notify each candidate of whether or not they qualify to be on the ballot. I think it's 10.13, the last sentence in the charter says that the clerk is supposed to tell candidates whether or not they qualify to have their name on the ballot. The judge said that because the law specifically didn't state it, he would give the, the allowance that Richard LeBlanc acted in the best capacity that he thought he should. But the clerk did not say that, in his opinion, Richard LeBlanc could not have taken action to disqualify her from the general ballot because the second complaint came in the day after the general ballot, which was roughly a full month before the general election ballots were even printed. So the argument in terms of the primary ballot, yes. The clerk's office found out about Deborah Fox having committed perjury after the primary ballots were already out to the voters. But they knew full well, as did the election commission, again, two out of the three members are funding her. They knew that she did it, and they still certified her anyway. In terms of the notification to the election commission, there's a law when you have to check certain eyes, certain boxes. In terms of official legal notification, there are steps that must be taken, and you must be properly notified by, being served by a process server. Although the process serving piece got to this, came to the city of Westland late, which is what the judge did acknowledge. He also acknowledged, or excuse me, it was also documented that although the process serving happened late, the, the election commission, the clerk, the Wayne County Campaign Finance Office, the Michigan Attorney General's Office, the FBI, Wayne County Bureau of Elections, all were, and Michigan Elections Bureau, were all notified via email on August the 24th and August the 25th of that impending lawsuit. They got the case number. They got all of the documents in terms to verify what Deborah Fox had actually done. So in my opinion, Mr. Graham, I actually agree with you. Having run for city council myself, all of us who sit up here had to meet the requirement of the law for elected officials to, to allegedly or appearingly seem to turn the other cheek or a blind eye or to assist a candidate that two of, out of the three election commission members are funding is, is, it's alarming. And I really hope that it is investigated. And if you look at the court case, when the judge made his order to allow the city to mail out those general election ballots, he added a sentence that this does not close this case and this matter is not resolved. And so that, to me, speaks to the fact that even though the judge did not require the city to reprint all of their ballots, it was clear that he didn't agree with what happened either. And so I hope that Westland citizens eventually get the justice that they deserve because the law was clearly broken based on the information that was given to all of the city council members and all of the other offices that I just mentioned. So I'll move on. Actually, I will go ahead and, and just thank you all for coming out, and I will see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Godbo.
Thanks. I'd like to start off first by thanking all the volunteers for Blues Brews and Barbecue. Doing the volunteer coordination for the event, all of these groups that stepped forward made my job really easy, trying to put together the volunteers for all the various time slots that, that it requires. But one thing is clear. This event could not happen without all of your help. The volunteers that stepped forward, the groups and organizations that, that worked this event provide an amazing amount of help and support during this event. So again, thank you very much. And don't worry, I, I've got all your emails, so you'll be getting notice next year again when it's time to, to sign up to volunteer. Earlier this evening, we had the police promotions, and they acknowledged the retirement of Deputy Chief Brian Miller, who's been with the department forever, seems like, anyway. Brian did a great job for this department and is going to be sorely missed. With that, though, came some promotions. The new deputy chief is Rich Kummer. And as a result of that, it opened up a new lieutenant's position, which is occupied by Lieutenant Brian Humphrey. And a sergeant position then opened up for Sergeant Robert Schurig. We also swore in two new officers, Officer Emily Key and Officer Reed Zalinski, as well as acknowledged the two new PSAs that will be going into the police academy as part of their PSA training. And that's PSA Mohammed Alzayadi, Yadi, and Jackson Allison. So I just wish them all the best and congratulations to those that were promoted. And Deputy Chief Miller is going to be sorely missed by this department. He's, he did a great job for this department for many years. That's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues about this, prior this evening. I wanted to extend my congratulations to the members of our police department that have had the ability to retire or received a promotion or a new hire or entering their career as a police service aide. So thank you and welcome to Westland. I'd also like to thank all of the nonprofits that participated in the Blues Brews event that really is what allows the event to take place. All of your hard work is greatly appreciated. And, you know, it is true that your funds go right back into supporting the community. So that's wonderful, and I look forward to seeing what you will be utilizing those funds for and how you'll be improving our community with that. It's October. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, like my colleague made mention. This is a special, sorry. I know I'm the one that cries. So my family was touched by that this year, and I just want to send out a lot of love to my aunt as she begins her battle. We lose far too many people to cancer in general. But breast cancer is just, it's a menace, and it needs to go away. She shared some ways that you can help spread the word. Prevention, early detection is key. If you're local and you want to help support, we have a wonderful Relay for Life Committee that puts on lots of fundraisers, and they will have their upcoming Pizza Palooza to help support their efforts. That's in November on the 16th here at City Hall. But October has other things that might be just as scary. Sorry, tried to find levity. But if you check out the city website and when Facebook wants to work again, check out Facebook. But there's lots of different events throughout the city. Our Historical Society is hosting some Halloween-themed events. There's the Malloween, which is going to be outside this year, so that's going to be great for our kids. And there's some other things going on. And I know the city of Westland has probably two of the best haunted attractions around. So if you're up to celebrating Halloween or, or the fall season and all things spooky, I think you'll find plenty of things to do. I also wanted to mention that it's the last two weeks of the farmer's market. So if you enjoy our farmer's market, you've only got two weeks to enjoy it. And then we'll have to wait till next year. So with that, I wish anyone who is battling any cancer, but especially breast cancer, love and light. And I know that what gets you through it is the strength of your person and your tribe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening. First off, just want to start out by congratulating all of our officers who were promoted this evening. Congratulations to Rich Kummer on his promotion to the new deputy chief's position. And congratulations to former deputy chief Miller on his retirement after quite some number of years of service here in the city of Westland. I want to thank all the groups and organizations who volunteered for yet another fantastic Blues Brews and Barbecue. As someone who's a barbecue aficionado and loves to, to cook and barbecue himself and posted on Instagram, if you can follow me, Councilman Mike McDermott, whenever it goes back up. It's, it's great to run an event like this here in the city of Westland. I certainly enjoy it. And I know a lot of the people in the community and around the tri-area enjoy it. So thank you to all the groups who step up and volunteer each and every year because that would be a failure and certainly not a success without it. And thank you to my colleague, Councilman Godbo, for coordinating the volunteers for the event each and every year, too. This isn't the first time he's done it. I know he's done it in the past as well. And then we have an election coming up. And if you took a look at those numbers from the primary, they were quite sad. We need to get more people involved in the democratic process here in the city. So the good news is, with that election still coming up, you have time to come here to City Hall, if you're not registered to vote, and do so, or request an absentee ballot here at City Hall and still vote by mail with your absentee ballot. So I would encourage anyone and everyone, talk to your friends, your family, your neighbors, anybody you know here in the community, encourage them to vote. And if they haven't voted, ask them why not. Find out, you know, what, what the barrier is, and if they think that, you know, all politicians are the same or something like that. You know, have them talk to any one of us, you know, work on, on their objections to voting because we need everybody to be active and engaged here. Democracy does not sustain when it is a sideline spectator sport. It only sustains when it is a participatory activity in which all of you, all of us, are engaged in. So I would certainly encourage everybody to get involved and get engaged. I wanted to say thank you to our state representative Coleman for bringing in some dollars here to the city. Hopefully, however we move forward with on the, on the Marshall Middle School plan, it's certainly exciting to know that we have some support from the state because all too often we're, we're told no from the state of Michigan about things we can't have and about money that they're taking away from us in terms of, you know, like statutory state share revenue. So it's nice to get some of that back and potentially a 2% bump in revenue sharing there as well. And then the last thing I wanted to, well, two things, actually. One, I wanted to thank all my colleagues who acknowledged that, you know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Obviously, breast cancer is a scourge that has affected far too many families. And if you know anyone that's been, you know, personally affected, just to be in a helping hand, to reach out, an accompanying voice, let, let them know you're there for them is, is great. But there's obviously more that you can do, and there's great organizations that we have right here in Westland that, that work to fight, you know, the awful disease that is breast cancer. So consider donating to, you know, a good cause as well to help, you know, advance the cause of fighting and ultimately beating the scourge that is breast cancer. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, coming up on the second Monday of this month is hopefully one day here in the city of Westland Indigenous Peoples' Day. I know that that's a resolution that we're potentially working on. I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Green, for emailing in support of that as well. And then also thank the mayor and the council president for, you know, being willing to sit down and discuss this. So in the future, we may be able to, if it is right for our city, to adopt Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October. And with that, I bid you all a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Pro Tem Londo.
Thanks, President Hart. Thank you, Mayor M. Katie's in the audience. Thank you for bringing us all our pink ribbons tonight. And thank you to my colleagues that are wearing pink for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I'll try not to crack, like Andrew, Councilwoman Rakowski did. But I just want to read a couple of facts here about breast cancer. Female breast cancer is now the most common cancer worldwide, surpassing lung cancer for the first time in 2020 with an expected 2.3 million new cases each year. Globally, breast cancer causes the greatest number of cancer-related deaths among women. One in eight women in the U.S. will develop invasive breast cancer in her lifetime. So it really is a terrible, terrible disease. You all know I lost my mother to cancer back in 2003. So I'll proudly wear pink and do anything I can to support breast cancer research. As was stated earlier tonight, we had a ceremony where we had promotions, new hires, and a retirement from the Westland Police Department. I want to congratulate Brian Miller on his retirement and thank him for his dedicated service to our community since 1997, Councilman Godbo. So he has been here a long time, so he's going to be greatly missed. Also want to welcome the new officers, we, Officer Key and Zalinski. And congratulations to Sergeant Schurig and Lieutenant Humphrey on their well-deserved promotions. And I thank the chief as well for continuing the tradition of these, conducting these ceremonies. Many of the groups are in the audience, so thank you to all the many organizations that help us staff and operate Westland Blues Brews and Barbecue, and to Councilman Godbo, who helps coordinate the activities or the volunteers. Appreciate all your hard work and appreciate the police and fire that are there as well. We have a very big police presence at these events. It's a safe event. It's a well-run event, and I encourage anyone to come out each and every year. It's a fantastic event. So thank you all for, for helping out with that. Last couple of things, I was able to attend the new Eloise Asylum opening with Alice Cooper. That was back a couple of weeks ago or so. The Eloise Asylum dedicated a street or a court, Alice Cooper Court. Pretty freaking cool to be on stage with a Hall of Fame rock star standing right next to me. He's a very nice guy, very nice to have him right here in Westland. And then they doubled down and invited me to the opening night, Friday night. And I was the first group to walk through. I walked through with a couple of county officials from the Economic Development Department. Very scary. I see you shaking your head. Very, very, I'll just say very creepy, let's put it that way. As someone who lives a couple of blocks away from Eloise, I know the history of those buildings and may or may not have roamed those properties as, as a kid, and it's, it's very creepy, so. But I encourage you to go out there. They put over $7 million in that facility. It was three years in the making. It's an incredible attraction. It's going to draw a lot of people to our community. But don't forget, we also have Hush Haunted Attraction here as well, which is another great facility. So we have two haunted attractions that are going to draw hundreds of thousands of people right here to Westland. So do whatever you guys can do to encourage people to check those out. And as was mentioned, too, we have many Halloween events coming up, so check WLND, our Facebook page, and website as well. And that is all I have tonight. Good evening.
All right. One of the bad things about going last is everybody talks about everything, you know? It always happens to me. But congratulations to our police officers today, those that were retired, those that were promoted, and those that were sworn in, you know, pro-police and happy to see that we're getting some young talent in. And we're really excited for the things that have, are on the horizon for our police department. Wanted to thank all of our civic groups. Blues Brews and Barbecue would not happen without the support of our civic groups. And quite frankly, I've always said civic groups are really the backbone of our community. And I'm very thankful for all of our civic groups. It's, it's, it's a really fun opportunity to see them all at one time, to interact with them all at one time, and then to be able to put on this joint fundraiser, really, that's designed to encourage the community, stimulate the community, give us something to do, and then stimulate those civic groups who then put their money back into this community for all the wonderful things that we do. So congratulations to all of them, and even more important, thank you to all of them. We couldn't do without you, and we wouldn't want to do it without you. So thank you. Last, you know, Breast Cancer Awareness, Mayor, thank you. So I, I called my colleague this morning and says, I can't find my pink ribbon. I can't find- find my pink ribbon. I'm, I'm tearing the house apart. He says, no worry, we'll just call Maryam Katie. I'm going, oh, why, why, why didn't I even think of that?
That's why I'm here, man.
Yeah, no. So, Maryam spared no time to make sure that we were all equipped with our pink ribbon. Thank you so much. It's two things that I always get a little misty-eyed over and it's veterans issues and talking about my wife. But I'll wear pink every October. And, man, no, it's, thank you. Get tested, get tested often, get tested again. Self-examinations are important. We, it, it happened so quickly with Linda, thirty-three years old, you know, thirty-three years old, extreme, in great health. We never thought it would have happened. And here we are with small children, you know, one of them in diapers. And my wife now has breast cancer. So, it was, it was tough. And it's a tough road. And I, I tell you, I, I would never want to walk that road again, but I'll be there for anybody that has to do it. But take care of yourself and take care of all of your friends and your loved ones. And make sure you're getting tested. The good news is this, because of all this awareness that we have and all this research that we have, we're getting better at fighting it. You know, the cases are going up, but the mortality rate's going down. But it doesn't mean we're not done, you know? Keep fighting. And thank you so much. And thank you to my colleagues for wearing the ribbon today. It does mean an awful lot to me. And it means an awful lot to Linda, even though she won't tell you because she's a pretty, she's a pretty reserved, proud woman. So, but thank you to everybody who came out today. Congratulations again. Thank you to Mike McDermott for leading us in the pledge of allegiance. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?